And thank you all for your patience and forbearance yesterday. Of course, over the last couple of days with the weather forecast, we were a little uncertain as to what day in time we could have this meeting. And we all agreed that it was a very important meeting for us to have, given the pressing nature of urgent items that's on our agenda. So I appreciate the board superintendent and staff administration and certain communications team making the adjustment to come and make sure that this was made available to the public. And so I think this is a demonstration of dedication and really strong teamwork. And so I want to offer my gratitude for that. If we take a quick look at the agenda, I want to kind of help us see what we want to accomplish today. As I mentioned in the communication last night, given the nature of the weather and the fact that temperatures will go down again this evening, and we want to keep safety first, it was important for me at least that we would tackle the most important business today, that being the items on the informal session. And so items in session two, we are not going to deal with today, nor the business meeting agenda in sessions four and following, just those items in session three. What we want to accomplish today is, of course, to look at the waivers. We know that the waivers are time-sensitive in terms of if approved, when they would need to be submitted to DOE in order to be, to go into effect next school year. And so we want to decide upon the matters for the waivers, transformation waivers, as well as open campus. The five-year budget advisory update, our objective in receiving and processing and analyzing this information is to be able to get as close to as we can to determining what part of those budget needs are essential for our work for the next fiscal year, for 14, 15, and then to look at how we prioritize those items for the next four years. That's where we want to land with the five-year budget outlook. And then we will also consider the school board budget. This will be our first look at the budget and for at least one of us, the first time looking at that particular budget. And what we want to do is get a clear understanding of what items are on the school board's budget, what our spending has entailed this year, where we are currently, and then the outlook for next year. Of course, that budget is not as large or exhaustive as the district's budget, and so we should be able to get a look at those items and talk about some decisions that we need to make over the next six weeks fairly quickly. We'll be considering, in addition to the budget or inclusive in the school board budget, our relationship with and contract with V S B A. And then we will also end with our consideration for the upcoming agenda. One of the things we agreed upon in our last training was that we would designate 15 to 20 minutes at the end of our meeting for agenda considerations for the upcoming meeting or meetings. We've dedicated noon to five for the meeting. I know there's a lot to talk about, but I would strongly urge just to be, if I can use this term, efficiently expeditious, I mean, I want us to just belabor in.
Sustained.
Yeah. And I won't be guilty of starting us out with that. And so I'll bring my comments to a close. But I want to be very clear on what our objectives are for today, and if we can make sure that our comments are moving us toward and our questions are a decision, that'll be great. And so volunteer will kind of be our timekeeper to help monitor the time that volunteers wear, that will help us monitor our time. All right? Please and thank you. Okay. Having said that, are there any opening comments, Sam?
Sure.
Okay. So there has been a request, that's me, Rodney. There has been a recommendation, a request, that we will consider the open campus waiver first. Are there any objections to that request? All right, here ain't none. We will begin there with our transformation, I'm sorry, open campus waiver. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. The open campus item is one that I believe we've had extensive discussion around the purpose and its alignment with the strategic plan and why it is important that we move forward with the potential of securing this. And I'll just end my opening comments by saying, of course, that this actual open campus approach is designed to reflect an early morning start and a late evening close, so that we are able to address non-traditional needs in the system. And it's a three-pronged approach that I don't think I have to revisit, but I will very briefly do so. We talked about our needs at middle school level with overage grade students, that we need to have our innovative approaches for getting those students back on track, so that we can graduate them on time and make them career-ready and/or college-ready, et cetera. That's one item of importance. The second item of importance centers on those students that are already in high school that are behind on credits, to the point that basically they cannot mathematically graduate from high school on time. So, and we do not have non-traditional options for those students at this point. That's number two. Number three, we want to be able to attract and invite back those students that have dropped out, so that ultimately we are benefiting the needs for our students, which should always be at the core of what we do. But the net effect of it, of course, would be increasing the graduation rate, but also continuing to decrease the dropout rate. All of these are things that are not new, but I just wanted to remind us of that. And the purpose of the waiver is to give us an opportunity to not just do the early morning start and the late evening close, but to deal with this throughout the year, fall semester into the summer, into the winter semester and into the summer, so that we'll have year-round opportunities for those students and that we are able to customize their schedules as needed. With that said, I will defer to Dr. Simmons.
Dr. King, Dr. Houston, members of the board. This is a request for approval of three waivers, so that we can proceed with trying to provide an open campus academy for our children. The first waiver is for the request and approval for an alternative to the standard school day, as Dr. King has defined with his opening statement. We want to start at 7:30 and probably run until 9 o'clock P M. each day, Monday through Friday. The second waiver is a request for an approval of an innovative program. Innovative meaning this is a program that is totally different than anything else we've provided within the school district for special population students, and we have accreditation standards that we intend to meet to make sure that these kids are successful. The third waiver is request for a pre-labor day start waiver. That's the third one. I have changed the criteria, redefined it from 100% to 85% in most instances. We would like to strive for 100% perfection in each of the measures for our children, but realistically, 85% is above what the state would expect for each of the students. The graduation rate, I think the state expects around an 80% proficiency, and we're seeking an 85% proficiency. So I've made the modifications that were recommended to me by board members regarding moving from 100 to something that's more easily attainable, and we are hereby requesting approval for the three waivers.
Speak on the first one once again.
The first waiver is the waiver for requesting the approval for an alternative to the standard school day.
All right. We're open for discussion, questions, comments, thoughts? We were originally scheduled to take action in the formal session, there'd be no business formal session and so for this matter, and given the time-sensitive nature of it, we will act on it in this session. And I think it'd be good to just go ahead and call for the vote on that now, not the nature of the end of this meeting. Is there a motion to support?
I was just doing one at a time.
Dr. Houston?
Yes.
Was the statement, Dr. King, was that a question in general about the open campus or was it in regards just to the waivers?
To the waivers.
Okay. I do have a general question regarding the whole open campus initiative, which I favor with a caution. So I would like you to say that along with comments regarding to the budget, hopefully before 1:15. Thank you.
Okay. And is relative to the budget for it, is it specific to that?
It is.
Okay.
Should we make a motion to?
Yes, and the question is whether we need to vote on the waivers separately. And I would intend a motion for all three, one motion, and then if there's some discussion or concern with either, then we can make that adjustment necessarily or amend it to the motion. Okay, so I'm ready for motion.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to accept all three waiver applications.
Second.
Okay. Probably move it seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, so just for clarity again, so because we have children who are going to be in the start before Labor Day, have additional seat time, and have the other change with the innovative approach, that's why we have to do the waiver. It's not school-specific, it is program-specific.
Right, that's correct.
And then, just for clarity again, on the IT piece of it, I had asked a question about location. And my understanding is that the proposed location of the facility has a better technology infrastructure than any existing facilities that we have. Is that simply the case there?
That is not the main reason, that's a factor. It will support the technology that we need. Edison Learning will provide the technology infrastructure for us, and they've already gone through that building. We know it meets its requirements, so we're good from that perspective. The main reason is that these children, this special population of students, they need to be housed in a building, so that we can deliver a specific program for them. They might get lost in the shuffle if we were housing them within a regular school environment.
And then my last question, on the budget, at the last work session, you all were recommending that the operating budget that we're considering next year's budget absorb about a million dollars a year, is that correct, is that what that figure was?
1.3, yes.
1.3 million. So I just want to make sure as a board, that in light of the gaps that have already been, that's been brought forward thus far, and I guess we'll hear more later, that we are clear that if we submit this request and to the state, our intention then is for the budget that we put together to align with that.
If I might ask, you had on that, at one point, for next year on paper, the operating budget would need to provide about 1 million, but that's assuming that the 80 or so kids that we would expect to bring back into the division would be eligible, would make us eligible for state funding, which means they would increase our average daily membership. Right now, we are projecting that those 80 kids could generate, if they're fully eligible, could generate $300,000, if for whatever reason we don't get 80 kids, and I know there's a population out there that says we'll get them, but if we don't, then that will reduce the amount of state funding we would get, which would increase the school division's requirement if we don't get the kids. But again, at the same time, if Edison isn't going to charge us for those kids that they weren't able to bring in, then it would be somewhat of offset. So it's 1.3 on paper, but it's contingent on kids that we've identified as current drop-offs coming back in, that we will receive approximately $300,000 from the state for those kids.
Okay. Yes.
One thing I would just ask, because these waivers are asking folks, teachers, to come in early, stay late, and/or this school year to be different, I just think we need to communicate that as soon as we finish the waiver application submission, so that our school division is aware of it as a whole, and learning it through our communication channels versus hearing it elsewhere, because, you know, it's a good thing for the division, and it could impact people's roles in the division as well. And so I just think it's important that we communicate that well within our division, so they're hearing what this program is from us.
Okay.
Let me just ask one more in terms of the budget. So currently, we have a contract in place with Maggie Johnson in Bridget?
Not until the board's.
Okay, so contingent upon board. Okay, so we're going to, I guess the timeline, the end of the process is approve the waiver, and then come back and approve the contract, and then based upon response from the waiver, then implement in June. If for some reason the waiver is not approved, then the action would be what?
If the waiver is not approved, we still could proceed to deliver the program, we would just have to comply with state requirements.
So we would just, the start date would just be after Labor Day, and then they depend upon, let's just say, worst-case scenario, if none of the waivers were approved, then we would just start after Labor Day and then fit the program within the existing schedule that is allowed.
Right.
Right.
When should we know from the Department of Education, a finding home waivers? Dr. King will go on and present before the State Board of Education as soon as we can get, once you approve, that once the board approves, then he will go before the State Board, and we'll prepare him for answers to the questions, and should happen pretty quickly.
And it's difficult to determine that timeline, because if the board approves, then we will immediately submit.
Okay.
And so, and then we will wait to hear from the State Board in terms of when we will be invited to present. So the amount of time that will be required for that, based on what I've seen, can vary.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry.
Just a point of clarification, I just want to make sure that all we're voting for is to approve the application process. We're not accept the way for the application for the waivers, we're not approving anything else at this point in time.
That's correct.
I'm just going to call for the question.
Okay. Motion is on the floor, is there any further questions or discussion? Okay, I recommend for this roll call vote, please, now.
Yes, and Dr. Houston?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, so it is ordered. Thank you all very much. Next item, of course, is the waiver for transformation schools. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. In reference to transformation school waivers, of course, the intent here is to give us the option of doing several things, opportunity to begin prior to Labor Day, and to develop what we refer to as a balanced calendar, which means that we could potentially have an early start, incorporate intersessions that we've talked about, fall intersessions, winter, spring, summer intersessions, and more days prior to the high-stakes test, which would mean that we would end earlier if we start early. That scenario really is based on the same 180 days that we have currently. So that scenario is not one that reflects additional days. However, by approving the waiver, it also gives us the flexibility of considering additional days. For example, if we settle on a calendar that would give us the opportunity to incorporate 10 additional days, and we feel that from a budgetary standpoint, we can support that, it gives us that flexibility. So in other words, let me go back and try to make sure that I make this as clear as my, if possible. We are requesting that the board consider approving the waiver for a pre-Labor Day start, so that we can do, have the option of being innovative and creative with our calendar in a way that it will allow us to better serve our students. And so it allows us to consider two things, or more, but I want to pinpoint two. We could consider the pre-Labor Day start, not add additional days for students, which means that we would start early, and if one would ask the benefit of that, the benefit of that would be to gain additional days prior to the high-stakes testing. That does not require, if we go with what I call, we call a balanced calendar, that would not require additional days for teachers. However, the benefit in that is that we are able to start early. We would secure additional days for instruction for students, to prepare them prior to the high-stakes test. The second advantage of it is that it also allows us to incorporate intersessions, fall intersessions usually around October, September, which is a week where we can bring in students that need it, or safety nets, also bring in students for enrichment, also winter intersessions that normally will fall around February, thereabout, for a week to bring in students again, based on students that need safety nets and enrichment. Of course, and then it gives us the opportunity to just move into the summer and do the same thing. So that's one thing I want the board to consider in terms of the benefit of approving a waiver for a pre-Labor Day start. The other piece is this, it also gives us the opportunity to consider innovation and creativity with our calendar that could include additional days, if through our budget cycle we determine that we have a structure that would allow us to do that, or if we determine that that's our priority and we want to even add days, we could start prior to Labor Day, add additional days as well. So I guess to sum it up, what we really need is the waiver for a pre-Labor Day start, so that we can utilize that flexibility to determine which calendar, which approach would be better for our needs right now. And so that's one piece, and so I want to add this as well. Now, there's another option that the board, of course, has, and that is that it can choose to say no to this. If, and here's my view on that, if you say no to that, so that means no early start, then what we would then be forced to do, we would take a look at our current structure that we have in place, which means that we would have to start after Labor Day, which is what we do now, look at the calendar, determine how we can incorporate within the same structure intersessions to get the safety net time during the year, which probably won't give us the weeks that I just mentioned, maybe we'll get X number of days, three days in one semester, and three in another, whatever the case might be, and modify the calendar in that way, but we would also stick to the same 180 days. So that means that, again, if we do not approve this waiver, then what I would be asking my team to do will be, as we go to the calendar committee, to take a look at the current calendar, to determine how we could restructure the calendar to secure at least some of these days, and also work with our professional organizations to align with that same mode of thinking. So just wanted to ensure that you understood the options there.
Now, before Leonard presents, I want to make sure that we're clear on a couple of matters. One goes back to the question asked by Rhonda relative to the open campus. This, support of this waiver would assume or presume support of transformational, transformation programs and concept, because that's what's embedded in this, that's the whole idea. So we might need to clear that matter, I think, if it is a matter, because if there's not total support of that concept and approach, then this is moot. Does that make sense? And so let's start there. Are there any questions, concerns, issues about the various models we're talking about, and of course, we've been over this for the last year? Are there questions, concerns about the concept, period? Then we come back quickly to the waivers, because that's, in my opinion, the most supportive piece here. Then we can get to the waivers, so.
And let me add to that. Okay. And so hopefully to add more clarity to that point, we are having ongoing discussions in community in reference to that as well, because we have committees that are out there, not just calendar committees, committees that are discussing these items, and so at this point, of course, initially, and I mentioned this to the board a while back, initially we talked about various scenarios around 10 schools that centered on the themes and the approaches for those schools. And so we talked about the potential benefit or significance of what we refer to as a conversion public charter approach. We discussed that and listened to the board, had discussion in the community. So we modified that thinking to the point of going the theme approach. And so that's where we are with that, but understand that any innovation around Montessori or around STEM or around pre-international backalaurate, or any of those things, those items are enhancements to the core of the work. The core of the work centers on teaching and learning, the delivery of services to children, based on where they are moving forward. Those themes allow you to infuse additional rigor for students to begin to hopefully accelerate the rate at which children begin to close the gaps that are present. Also, the intent of this is to begin to change what I call the DNA of the school and its perception and its previous, its past in terms of performance, because these schools, the schools after we did our review, had challenges around the percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards. Therefore, the need to look at transforming. And so, and that's where we are with that. And two, and I don't think this is preferred, even if the board does approve the, this piece in terms of the waiver, there's, we still will be coming back to the board with the final package for what transformation looks like. And so you still have an opportunity to say no to transformation, so by approving this, it just gives us the flexibility of calendar, like what we mentioned earlier, in terms of, but under innovation, and I know Dr. Sevigny's going to speak in a few minutes, but the importance of innovation for transformation centers on opportunities like what we mentioned earlier. You know, we need more time, and I know there's been some discussion about time not being an innovation, and I never said time wasn't innovation, not my philosophy that time is an innovation, it's what you do with the time that is the innovation. And so when you have extended time, extended opportunities, it's how you structure that time that becomes innovative, because it has to be based on what is good for children, what is proven, and what is research-based. And so that is our intent for that. So again, even, even in my view, even if the board approves the waiver to give us that flexibility to look at our calendar, to look at our school day under innovation, you still will have the opportunity soon, once we bring back those packages, modify the transformation, if you choose to say no, you still have the opportunity to say no, even if we go forward with that. That's not preferred in terms of the sequence of events, so I just wanted to remind the board of that.
Right. But, and I understand your point about time, and I appreciate the clarity you provided, but as it stands now, the transformation themes are major parts of the application. And so it was certainly, approving it was certainly due with the understanding that we are, in a sense, supporting the themes, and I'm in support of the themes, but I just want to make sure that we are all really clear on, and I think the question was raised with open campus, and I think it was a good question. So, so that we're clear as we move forward as the government's team with what we're seeing and, and what we're, what we're supporting. All right? Floor is over. Questions?
Could I ask Dr. Sevigny to, to give further information so that, that might, that might give information that could drive questions forward?
Yeah, and I wasn't going to not, not have a present, but again, if, let me, let me speak very plainly here. If board, a board member or board members is totally not in support of, of the transformation approach, then, then sitting and having a present on these waivers, knowing that that's a big part of it, makes no sense until you iron that out, in my opinion. And that's why I raised that first. So, if, if, if there aren't any questions or comments relative, relative to that, then we, we can proceed.
I have one. Okay. So, and I looked in the presentation, and the one of the charts in there has anxiety and these other things in here, so I figured that was a good chart. But I like to try to separate some things, at least from my perspective. So the idea of themes, I'm comfortable with, I support. The ideas of magnets, I support. The folk, the laser light focus on instruction and personal education plans and the cycle for results and all of that, I support. What, what causes me concern is, I don't feel I can get a clear picture of exactly what we are proposing to do. So, one of the advantages that we had with the open campus presentation is that the last work session, we got an updated presentation on open campus. The last work session that we had on the transformation initiative was in
October.
October. And so, following that, that's what we said, you know, the vote was to continue planning, move to the themes and so forth. But when I, when I read the application, and even Dr. King, as you were talking, I hear five or six different scenarios in my mind that are being presented. And so, I'd just like to be able to have it narrowed down and focused, and have some clarity. You know, we were in Richmond this week as part of the school improvement training. And one of the things that, that was expressed in that training repeatedly is that the schools that are in most challenging environments, or the children that are in those schools, oftentimes need the most attention, perhaps more resources, and I would add more clarity around what it is that we're going to do with intentionality. And so, I just have to admit, I'm still confused, because, because I was reading through the waiver, the latest version of the waiver, and as Dr. King, as you were describing, there are pieces in here, to me, that look like the charter school model, there are pieces in here that look like the theme model. All of this was still supposed to layer on top of the DeJean Richter recommendations that are still, still out there. The budget piece is still out there. So to me, there's, in our multi-variable equation, I'm still trying to get us to narrow down and focus on some equations that we can, or at least some of the variables that we can be solid around. So I'm comfortable going through the waiver and the concept, but I do think we have to be extremely clear about what we're voting on. Is it pre-Labor Day? Is it additional days? What's the budget? What's the concept? How does it fit together? How does, how does it align? Because I, for me, I still feel like we've got a lot of stuff on the wall, but we're not really sure how it all fits together that on the end of the day is going to lead to our, our end results. And the last thing I'll just say, just in terms of the waiver process in general, it is very difficult to get pre-Labor Day waivers into commonwealth. And it's a multi-step process, and maybe multiple readings of the, of the application. And so, what we're proposing with 10 schools at one time is pretty big. And, and so, I would just ask, as we go through this, that maybe we should also look at whether or not, based upon the assessment that you all have done, if maybe there are one or two schools that maybe we should go down that path, and some other schools a different path. But I am concerned about lumping all 10 schools together, because it may present for the, for the state an all or nothing proposal, whereas if we had two or three schools together in an application, or, or an application per school, we may have an opportunity to at least start down the path with a few schools or one school versus lumping them all together in one big group.
Thank you.
So, want to clarification, frankly adding on to what Rodney was saying. If we apply all 10, are we obligated to do all 10 if we, as a board, decide to move forward with 10? So if the state says yes, are we obligated?
In my view, if the state says yes, it gives us the freedom and opportunity to take advantage of that. So, I, I, I believe that you have the flexibility to modify if necessary.
And let's say we submit it with 10 and we decide to do five. How does that impact us moving forward with potential other waiver applications where we don't act on all of it?
I would have to, I would, I would have to research on that.
There's a, there is a piece in there with, with the state's requirements that clearly state that they expect you to implement
Yeah.
what you submit for.
And then they expect you to implement it in the timeframe you're applying? So for instance, if we say yes to this today, we're expecting to implement it in August of this summer?
That is one, yeah. Yeah, that is one of the requirements slash, or expectations in the state's waiver application requirement.
And I think that, you know, depending on when we decide to vote on the actual transformation, and if you end up, Dr. King, going to Richmond first, they could very well ask you, well, has your board supported this transformation? And say, why are we voting a waiver that may be not fully implemented? So I think we need to be very considerate of that, in terms of maybe the transformation comes back and we choose to do five, to Rodney's point versus 10. I'm just saying that out there, I think we need to consider that.
Thank you.
Right, and I would, I would agree with those points, and as I had mentioned in a, an email that I had sent out a little bit earlier when I spoke with Kathleen Smith, I, I'm not familiar with the waiver process, you know, as, as, as a board member, but it seems to me that they're very receptive to having a couple of drafts being presented to them, and then looking over it, and then giving us feedback on it. And when I did ask her the question about accountability, you know, if we state that 100% of students will meet and exceed standards within three years, they are going to check us every year and see how we are doing that. So, I really want us to be as realistic as possible with what we intend to do with the waivers. And, you know, with the open campus, it was, it was pretty clear, we had three waivers alternated to the start day, a separate waiver for innovative program, and then a separate waiver for pre-labor start day. Why is this one all rolled up into one?
Because we are asking for the alternative to the standard school year, that particular waiver, and according to the Code of Virginia, you have to demonstrate good cause to request a pre-Labor Day start. And based on the system as we are today, we only qualify under one area, which is number three, or subcategory number three, which deals with innovation.
Okay.
So the waiver is only the waiver for the pre-Labor Day start, but we had to build the case around the innovation, that's why there's so much in there. But we are only requesting today for permission to move forward with submitting this to the state for consideration, that's all we're asking for today. We're not voting on the whole transformation initiative, that's what Dr. King had alluded to earlier, it's simply to move forward with submitting this to, and it will go to Kathleen Smith first, and she's already shared with us that she will read it with a critical eye, and we'd have the opportunity to edit, so to speak, if need be, and then it would go through her to the policy office.
For the 180-day timeframe that we have, when are we looking at, if she sends it back to us, and then we revise it and send it back to her before it goes to, I guess, the policy committee or whoever approves it, what is our timeframe?
As quickly as possible.
Right. I'd like to offer a motion.
But I think there's more information.
Because we're just offering, we're just, again, all we're doing is making a recommendation to apply for the waiver.
Correct.
That's all we're doing. We're not, we're not doing anything with the transformation project, other than asking for a waiver.
But the waiver is extremely difficult to get for innovation, that's what she said specifically, especially under a policy committee, so.
You don't think the, you don't think the Montessori, the IB, the, tho- those aren't innovative programs?
It's not that it's not innovative, it's that we have to prove our case that this innovation is specific and ideal to those schools, and that we are going to uphold our promise of whatever we deem as meet and exceed standards. That's, that's what I interpreted from what she told me. So she, it's not the fact that those programs aren't innovative. No, I asked her at the turnaround conference.
Actually, there's a, there's a, you know, there's a whole document, there's a whole document that provides guidelines for this process. And I think I shared that several times, probably since June. The, I, I would just ask us to be very cautious about saying that this is just the waiver, and the waiver request has all the transformation stuff in it, and we're going to come back later. Again, the, the whole, you know, King's Dominion and all, the whole pre-Labor Day thing in Virginia is a big deal. And I just think as a, as a board and a government's leadership team, we need to be very strategic in what we do with this. Because to, to, in my mind, if we're going to go with all 10, go with all 10, do it well, do it right, put it before the state board and defend it, and then implement it. But to, you know, kind of treat it like, well, we're going to give you 10, and then depending upon what happens, we might do 10, we might do five, we might do three, we might do something else, I don't think is good for us as a board and as a district, and, and I think potentially harms us with future consideration by the state board, because they will, you know, again, you know, if you go and look at the last one state board meeting, there were, I think, three or four schools that applied for, for these waivers. And I just think it's important that, because this is so important and so serious, that we treat it as this is something that we are fully supportive of, we fully understand, we put it before the state board, we stand behind it, and we move forward with it. But to, to put it out there and to then come back later and say, well, because of budget or because of other considerations, we changed our mind, you approved us for 10, but we're going to do five, I don't think that sets up a very good ongoing relationship between us and D E O E and us and, and the board.
Yes.
That all may well be true, and I don't doubt your understanding and interpretation of it, but we are up against a timeline. If we don't approve this today, we basically tell it to go away, because we have, February 1st, from my understanding, is the 180-day window that we have for a pre-Labor Day start.
Which is why the waiver issue originally came up in September of last year, to try to be out ahead of us.
Again, it's true, but if, if we don't act upon this today, then we can just, we can basically set, set aside for 2014. And the thing is, that's what, that's what the board is.
Dr. King didn't say that, he said we could still do it and work in within days, three days here, three days there. So if we don't necessarily get the waiver, you're going to be creative in other ways of using those days.
I would like to remind the board, of course, you have the option of saying no. So any issue. If you say no, we will function within the current structure, we will look at the calendar as it is currently structured, to determine the type of time and flexibility we can secure within the same 180-day rollout. Now, does that, in my view, is that a bit limiting compared to what we could get from the waiver? Yes. However, if you do not have full confidence in where we're going and discomfort with the unknown, then you vote your conscience in reference to that. So, I, I see two things here. One, the team has worked very diligently on this approach and this rollout. So, I would like to at least have the opportunity to briefly present.
Yes, we definitely want to hear what she's prepared.
Yeah, that's one thing. And secondly, determine implications for going forward, and then just remember that I feel as if my team has done its job, and it is to bring you the recommendations that we feel will begin to position us to do what we say we need, which is to increase the percentage of students meeting and exceeding standards, begin to move us towards full accreditation. And that is not a panacea, it is not overnight, and we cannot do it within the current structure, not at the rate we need to. However, again, you can vote no for the waiver, that's not going to stop us from continuing to drill down into the current structure, to modify it to the point that we can get to the needs for our children from an intercession standpoint. So, you know, I understand that there are unanswered questions, because what we are presenting and proposing has not been presented and proposed in this division. And so, as we move forward to state board, there is an opportunity that we could be told no. And so, but I, I, I think the real, the real issue is, it centers on what we need to do for children. And if this is too problematic based on the, the items that are here, then vote no. And once you vote no, I pull my team back together, and then we'll look at the current structure, and we'll make the necessary proposed changes to the calendar that we think can give us some movement, and we'll, we'll move forward within that structure. So I clearly understand your questions and concern, so, but I, you know, I do think we need to at least hear.
Right.
I will follow Dr. Sevigny, but, but the question that I have is actually for Warren, and I know that he's going to come off in about five minutes. Warren, are you still there?
Warren, are you there?
Are you, are you still there, Warren?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes. Do you mind if I ask him a, a quick question before?
Go ahead.
Uh, Warren, in your experience within the Virginia Department of Education, what are your thoughts on the application as it stands for approval for innovation and the standards that we've set forth in this application? Do you have any experience with that, with that process?
No, and, and Noel, thank you very much, I can hear you too well, I catch very little of the previous conversation, but I get you very well. So, I think your question was, to be sure that I heard what you asked, do I have any experience with the application for waivers, all the subjects of this conversation? Is that, is that the question?
Right, and any of your experience with the Department of Education?
Yes, when I was with the Department of Education, I did not deal with anything in this area at all. There were waivers that I dealt with, but not in this area at all, so I feel really at a loss to offer any insight, but I appreciate being asked and involved, and once again, I do have a budgetary comment question regarding the open campus, and then I have something critical that I really wish to say regarding the budget priority, but thanks for asking. I think the shortest answer is, I don't think I can be helpful here, Dr. Gabriel.
Okay, and Warren, again, let us know when you, when you sign off to go through security and when you sign back on, and we will try to get your comments as quickly thereafter as possible, knowing that, that you'll be boarding the airplane in a little bit. So, so let us know when you sign off and when you sign back on, please.
Okay, I, I will be signing off shortly, but again, before we end this conversation on open campus, I would like to make a statement regarding the budget issue related to it, and then when I sign off and sign back on, I hope we're in the budget conversation and that I have an opportunity then. So before we finish this conversation, and hopefully in the next 15 minutes, I have an opportunity to make a statement regarding the budget on open campus. Open campus being a, an initiative Open campus being a, an initiative, a new initiative that I favor, by the way.
Okay, so we'll see how the conversation flows. We're getting ready to hear from Dr. Sivigni now on the transformation application waiver, or waiver application.
May I make the budgetary comment now, knowing that in the next few minutes, that I might not be available to you?
Okay. Yes, by all means.
He's gonna put his hands up.
Just wanna have it on the record, and I thank you very much. Again, I hear very little of the conversation, but Dr. King is the clearest to me. Noel, you are the by clearest, the clearest by far, so far. But in regards to the budget for the open campus initiative, I am very pleased that this new initiative will allow us to deal with a population that very few people have dealt with, and I expect it to be successful short and long term. My concern that I have to talk about now is related to the budgetary issues, revenue and expenses. And I need to reserve the right at any point to make new decisions based on new information if revenues and expenses do not pan out to be what we're talking about and hoping for. So the reason why I mention that, I am very familiar with other schools, not necessarily similar to this open campus schools, but other schools, specialty schools, charter schools or whatever like this, where revenue and expenses become an issue. And I have to say that I know that this is a wonderful new initiative that we're trying to do to help people that have here before not been assisted in the ways that I would want them to be, as they pursue their educational and their global world contribution. But I need to say that in future, in budgetary discussions, next year or years following that, with new information, I may need to make a different decision regarding the budget issues. This is but one program in the entire Norfolk Public Schools reimagined system, and I thank you for listening to this lengthy statement. I am supportive of the open campus initiative highly. I worry a great deal about the budget based on other experiences that I am personally familiar with and have observed, and I just wanted the opportunity to say that. I look forward to having about that much talk, budget priorities in general, after I sign off and sign back on. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Warren. Okay.
Okay, I wanna let you know that we crafted this particular presentation based on questions that had been posed by board members, so we tried to draft this so that we could answer all the questions that had been put forth. I also believe that I owe you an apology. We had a conference call last week and went, where we discussed some of these questions and we drafted some documents and made some revisions. And then when school was canceled yesterday, I made the assumption that we would not be needing today, so I did not send you those documents until last night. So for that, I apologize. But you did receive the waiver with the highlighted yellow changes in it, so you could very easily identify what had been changed or added to as a result of conversations that took place last week. So this particular presentation focuses on where we've been, and we've talked quite a bit this morning already about transformation and what we have done. I do wanna remind you that we are still in phase two, so we're right on target for what we had said we would be doing in January in regard to the transformation initiative as a whole. So we are getting ready now to share some more definitive information about where we're going with this, and hopefully by the end of this, more of your questions will be answered and you will have a higher degree of confidence. Phase two will begin next month, and we will continue with what we're doing, and you'll notice that communication is at the very top of that list. It was our plan all along to begin communicating the rollout for transformation as it will impact the school district for next year. And that information would be specific to the calendar and our parent advisory councils and our choice options, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. We also will share the calendars. Our district calendar committee that Dr. Simmons chairs was to meet yesterday, and that has been rescheduled. But we do have some calendar recommendations for the district-wide committee that came from the stakeholder committee that works specifically on the calendar. Phase three will begin in August, and we will continue as we had planned, but I just wanted to remind you that we're right on target with what we had published back in the fall. You've seen these charts before in regard to change and how change is nervous and it makes some of us more anxious than others, but we are changing day-to-day practice. As Dr. King said, we're changing the DNA of our 10 schools, we're changing the DNA of the district, but focusing specifically with these 10 schools from an innovative perspective. And change is messy, there's a lot of transition, and everyone is at a different spot on the transition curve. Everything that we're sharing with you in regard to innovation is proven practice, and it centers right back to the heart of our cycle for results. And we will talk in just a second about innovation, how that applies to where we're going. The waivers, the waiver that you have in front of you is built around two bodies of research. One is the Council of Great City Schools research that was published in October of 2012 that very clearly outlines the need for dramatic and holistic change to have an impact on student achievement, and that research was specific to black males. But we're taking that and applying it across the board, but it was very clear in regard to more time, very focused rigor and access and community involvement, and all of that was built in to the transformation. And this particular body of research is outlined in the waiver as part of the need and rationale for a pre-Labor Day start. We also focus on Eric Jensen's research coming from Teaching with Poverty in Mind, What Being Poor Does to Kids' Brains and What Schools Can Do About It. And he talks about the impact and the social cognitive health-related and stress-related factors associated with economically disadvantaged students and how you directly impact those by transforming your school culture. So his research is also included as part of the rationale for a pre-Labor Day beginning. Our objectives, our ultimate goal at the end of five years is for 100% or all of our students, but based on feedback from the board, we did make some changes to that. And you received those school-specific charts yesterday, and they begin with the baseline data of the realistic expectation of where students are at the end of last year, based on last year's student achievement baseline data, and then that's chomped out over the next five years, so that the end of five years, we are realizing that 100%. But it do, it is broken down into incremental layers of growth, and you received that information yesterday. Do you have any questions about the student-specific or the school-specific goals?
At the high level or specific to the lower?
Either one.
Well, I, I will, let me go through the waiver.
Okay. All right, the community committees that we referenced earlier, those began in November, and those were all individuals that attended one of the 20-plus community forums that were held back in the fall, and we had hundreds of individuals volunteer to work on the three community committees. We had one that was specific to enrollment or lottery, which, once we stepped away from conversion charter, that morphed into school choice. Then we had a pre-Labor Day committee, and we also had a management team advisory council which morphed into a parent advisory council. Those committees met in November and December and into the very beginning of January and have provided written recommendations to the school system around the areas in which they were tasked to research and, and offer their decisions. The proposed pre-Labor Day, as Dr. King alluded to earlier, has staff coming in on August 11th and students beginning on August 18th. At this particular moment, based on what we believe will be budgetary priorities, we are not looking to expand the 180 days, we're simply looking to redistribute those 180 days, and that is the same for staff. So in terms of staffing or building staff, there would not be a budgetary impact because we're taking the 200 days for staff members and simply redistributing them throughout the existing year. Another point that was brought up, and I feel it is important for us to mention, is that if the proposed calendar is implemented, then 10 of our schools would operate on a slightly different calendar from the other NPS schools. Now, I will share with you that the calendar committee, which was a community calendar committee, one of their recommendations was that all of our schools start pre-Labor Day, and they did not want to have two calendars. We knew that we were not in a position to be able to do that at this particular moment, but we do want you to know that was their recommendation, and the calendar committee is bringing forth three different recommendations to the district-wide committee that Dr. Simmons chairs, and that will all be discussed. And that, that's a little bit of the reason why we're looking at, it's almost like a fish bone, if A, then B, then C, because all of those decisions are still in the processes being made. And we know definitively from this point that we're not looking at adding days to the calendar simply because we cannot afford it today. We're looking at the redistribution of those 180 days.
Just for clarity.
Sure.
So... Before, the waiver we got before was saying 190 days, you're saying we're not saying 190 days now? For the, for the students?
No.
Okay, so it's, so it's 180 days, not 190 days?
It's just simply being redistributed and we're looking to expand the summer intercession.
And that just, that change just happened the last couple of days, is that correct?
That was in the revisions, they did the yellow...
That we got this morning.
Or last night, whenever it was said, yes. Any other question? I'm trying to go quickly. There are some other budgetary components that we are factoring in and have figures to support this depending upon if A, then B. One of the things would be the additional cost of utilities, building-wide utilities for the 10 additional, for the additional days in August. And then the other would be the transportation cost for those additional days, because we would have those 10 schools coming in earlier. So those bus driver salaries and the cost of operating those buses would be a budgetary impact, and we're factoring that in to the transformation component. And Mr. Clyndale is working diligently to get us an accurate figure by school for that. So all of that is, is being taken into account. And the programs, as Dr. King mentioned earlier, have, we have not deviated from those, and we do feel confident that they are innovative. And we have had many conversations with the state about these programs, and they are prudent and they are creative. And the unique thing about these programs is that they're all, they have years and years of historical data to support them, because many of these programs are internationally known, they're not unique to Norfolk and they're not unique to the state. So the information that we've gotten from the State Department of Urbanization has been slightly different because there is the historical or the longitudinal data to support the success and innovation and creativity of these programs. And the fact that we are looking to provide these programs for every student within the building, it is not a program within a school, it is something that will, that every child within the buildings will benefit from. We've received very positive verbal feedback from the conversations we've had with the State Department in regard to the good cause innovation component. Are there any questions?
So once again, you're saying that, that these, all 10 schools have to be considered as a packet?
The advice that...
Yeah, no problem. So, in other words, we can't send up eight, we can't send up five, we, we need to send up 10?
We drafted the waiver this way based on the recommendation of the State Department because we're looking at this as a district initiative. It's not a building initiative, it's a district initiative with the 10 schools. So we crafted and gleaned this with all 10 in one waiver based on advice that we received. I totally understand what you are saying in regard to individual waivers, but this was crafted based on advice that we received from them.
Understand. So when they review this, they're gonna be viewed as a packet, they're not going to, it's not a possibility that they would reject one of the themes or two of the themes, anything like that?
It is our understanding that, based on the advice that we received from them, that it would be approved or denied in its entirety, because it's a district initiative. It's not a building initiative. So that, that is the way it was crafted, based on that advice.
So just the, on page 19 of the waiver, the one with the highlighted additions, that what you said, at the last paragraph, one of the last sentences, it references the 10 additional days of instruction will strategically drive student achievement by working collaboratively and so forth. So the, the application still has references to the 190 days of reading it correctly?
Well, we never clearly defined 180 or 190, and you said 10 additional days here because we're considering that summer intercession piece that we referenced as part of that as well.
And in addition, if we are able to, to get clearance for a pre-Labor Day start and we pull those days back, you do secure additional instructional days prior to the high stakes testing time. So that's part of it.
That's what you're referencing, is 10 days that you would normally not receive if you started.
Right.
So, that's not...
Do you feel like that should be more clear?
It would've been helpful for me, I don't know how the state would agree with that.
I do have another question. Dr. King, you mentioned that, that the themes would be an enhancement to the transformational initiative. Can you speak a little bit more to that for me to understand that?
Sure, sure. Let's use pre-IB as an example.
Okay.
If we were to use pre-IB as an example, you have to consider that when you slice and dice the needs for any individual school, then you determine that you've had a certain percentage of students meeting, a certain percentage of students not meeting, and a certain percentage of students succeeding, of course. And so in each of these schools, I mentioned earlier that we have a large proportion of children that are not meeting standards, across literacy and across literacy. So at the core of that is how you provide the necessary professional learning for teachers to hone in on the elements of the standards for each individual child based on that child's deficiencies. That is at the core of what must happen in each of these schools to begin to move student achievement forward. That's one piece as it relates to the classroom. The other piece relates to the kind of training and professional learning that has to happen for building-level principals to continue to be more and more effective with leading, guiding, and modeling that approach. And so with, for example, using the pre-IB as an additional piece to what I just briefly described, it also allows us to infuse additional rigor from where the child is from. For example, pre-IB is pretty clear on what rigor means, at the early level, the middle level, the high school level. So at the same time that student Sam King is at a certain point, he has to receive customized services based on his needs, elements of the standard around which he's deficient. And then the pre-IB rigor and strategies that come with what, the type of training that teachers receive from a pre-IB approach would allow Sam King to benefit from the delivery of instructions, the strategies that the teachers secure from that. At the same time, pre-IB is well-respected globally. And so when you do this, and the, and the man... And so, when you do this, in the manner in which I just described, incrementally you change, you begin to change perception over time as children get better, as they close gaps, and in schools that have never had pre-IB. Then build a feeder system where those students move from elementary to middle with the next level of IB, then with the option to move into high school, the option to move into high school, because we have, we already have rabid IB. But this, the net effect of this is designed to increase the number, percentage, proportion of, proportion of children ready to enter that program, because now it's limited, especially within the schools that we're proposing the transformation of. So when I say that these themes only provide enhancement to the core of what must happen, that's what I mean.
Dr. King, you know that I've expressed some concern about Montessori concept, and so the, my concern had been that I did not see the, I did not see the research that would show that the Montessori concept then would be suitable for the schools that they're being targeted for here at the Norfolk Public Schools. When we originally looked at this from a charter concept, I was looking at that as being not just an enhancement of the work that was going to be going forward. So with the theme approach, would it be true that this has changed from the charter approach, or was that the same, same concept? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I think I do.
Yeah.
There are similarities. However, let me speak to the Montessori strategy approach.
Okay.
Because the intent here is to, again, provide professional development for teachers and for the building-level leaders that will center on building their expertise around problem-solving, around what we refer to as the tactical kinesthetic approach, which means the hands-on, around also pacing, which means that you move students at the pace that's required for that individual child, which goes back to customizing the needs. So Montessori strategies that we, I respectfully disagree with what you alluded to around Montessori not being able to benefit these children. The other thing, one thing you must, must recognize is that very rarely will you find across the nation opportunities for these children to benefit from a Montessori rollout. Now, when I say Montessori rollout, I'm only talking about speaking to the best practices around Montessori. And it's those strategies that are effective with moving student achievement forward, and that's the delivery of the model. It's the problem-solving, it's the, it's the student's pacing, it is the hands-on approach that in research is proven in terms of the kind of results you get from that when it is implemented with fidelity. So enhancement to that speaks to that piece. And if you recall, if you recall the data from the summer intervention program at P. B. Young, there was one of the teachers that had been trained in Montessori strategies. The results from that particular classroom really reflected greater growth even than in the others. And so, and so, you know, I consider that as one piece of action research to pinpoint that these children will benefit from it, if it is implemented with fidelity and the training is done at the level that it should. So that's the intent there. It is not, these are not, these are not themes that are designed to be the silver bullet in isolation.
In other words, it's a total package. The Montessori strategy concept isn't a Montessori school, it's a strategy.
Absolutely.
And so there's confusion between those two concepts in some people's minds here.
Maybe, maybe. But I want to be clear, so that maybe I can bring clarity to that, because it centers on the strategies from the Montessori concept that are proven in getting student achievement gains. And so we want our teachers trained around those strategies, as I have described them, so that they are able to better get those results, secure those results, in addition to that core piece that I mentioned around customizing the approach based on the cycle for results. All of these things really dovetail and become complementary of each rollout, and so that's the intent.
One last question. I noticed that in our discussion on the last working board meeting about budget priorities, that your number-one budget priority was professional development. Did you choose that priority because of the need for professional development around the theme schools? Is this, is this in the thinking?
That was not the catalyst. The catalyst was based on the review from the first year, in terms of the percentage of students meeting and exceeding. And when you do, when you disaggregate the data, and you take a look at where our children are weak, and you look at the elements of the standard in mathematics and in literacy, then it is obvious that there are some examples that would clearly indicate that we need to have a laser-like focus on training teachers to hone in on how do we plug the gaps as it relates to reading comprehension? Or how do we plug the gaps as it relates to boosting the vocabulary, internalization of students? How do we train teachers and principals to focus on the reading comprehension level so that they are moving the Lexile scores as they should? That analyses of the data related to student achievement is really a well...
That's right.
That's driving the consideration for the need for professional development for teachers and for principals. This piece, again, though, however, in addition to that, accelerates that whole motion, because you receive that training with the rigor that's also infused, so you get both. And that's what we need, and so that's really the driving. Thank you.
Okay, one second. Any other questions on what Dr. King or Sevigny has presented? Are you finished? Or are we even...
Pause it. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
No, no, I have stopped to answer any questions.
Oh, yeah, but you're still on board, is it? Oh, okay. Okay, all right. You got a question?
I will, but I'll deal with others.
Were we going to talk about the waiver itself, because I just have a point of clarification about literally some numbers in the waiver?
Okay.
I'll do that. So Dr. Sevigny, I think you said earlier that based on a conversation last week, you had changed maybe some of the goals so they weren't at a hundred percent, is that correct?
For year one, correct.
Okay, so on page five of the application, it still has a hundred percent throughout. Was that going to be changed, or am I misreading?
Those are for the district as a whole. It says on the bottom of page four, student achievement goals specific to each school are clearly defined within the evaluation section of this waiver. The five-year goals specific to the transformation initiative for all ten schools are outlined below. And then those are where we want to be in five years, and then in towards the back, when you're looking at in the evaluation section, are the charts specific to each school.
For each year.
For each year, yes.
As to how we get to the one hundred percent?
Yes.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
And that's broken down for each of the ten schools. And the baseline was generated from their twelve, thirteen summative data for their SOL, for Core EOC performance.
Okay. My closing statements, I would suggest to the board that this is major, it is about transformation, it has to be major. However, it is not something that the governance leadership team and my administration should enter into without one hundred percent support and confidence. Therefore, if there is unreadiness around it, then I would suggest to you that we don't proceed. And I mentioned to you earlier that we will look at the current structure, and we will secure every ounce that we can within the current structure for our children, because that's just going to have to happen. And so, again, I feel that it is our job to do work around innovation and bring those recommendations to you based on that. Where we are as a division, we are going to have to do the work differently. Even, even without the waiver, we're going to have to do the work differently. And with that comes some discomfort, because it does reflect change. Even without the waiver, it's going to reflect change, because you will not begin to not just, to not just close achievement gaps, but begin to incrementally eliminate achievement gaps, and we do the same thing that we've always done. So, but again, I want to reiterate, if there's unreadiness around this at all, we don't need to move forward. And I can pull my team together, and we can take a look at the current structure and determine how we can get additional intercession days or hours, that kind of thing, because we're going to have to do that. But it will mean that we take a look at the calendar, and it could suggest a modified rollout in terms of how we do it. So, and I don't want to proceed with unrest and unreadiness at all.
Okay. All right, so I feel like we keep coming back to this all-or-nothing scenario, so I want to try to explain the unreadiness that I have to the greatest extent possible. About a decade ago, I worked on the middle school busing committee, and in that committee we proposed themes at all the middle schools. They had them sectioned off by different parts of the city. We looked at feeder patterns, we looked at lottery, we looked at rigor, almost everything that is being proposed in this initiative, we also proposed something similar. So from the theme approach, the rigor approach, the opportunity approach, the pieces that have been added around, you know, the cycle for results, the laser-like focus, all of that, I have no unreadiness whatsoever about that. Let me tell you what my unreadiness is. My unreadiness is in the strategic preparation of the concept and of the program, so that it is clear to me as a board member what we're doing, when we're doing it, what the outcomes are going to be, how it impacts the community, and if folks are in a position to be able to fully understand what's being proposed, rally around it, support it a hundred percent, and have our budget aligned with it, and the strategic plan and everything else. So I just want to make sure that my advocacy for a better waiver document, and my advocacy for a more thorough application when we're doing the charters, is not unreadiness about the concept or the approach. There's some things in there that I'm trying to bring forward, and I think I've done that, and you all have reflected that, and I hope that it's better, because I did take the time to read it and give you some thoughts back, so that as we move towards doing things differently, we do them as well as we possibly can with the greatest impact possible. And so I just want to, I just want to separate that, because I don't think it's, I really don't agree with the approach that, you know, if you have some unreadiness, then you pull the whole thing back. I would prefer you not do that. I would prefer that you give an opportunity to hear where we think there may be some areas of strengthening, and go back and strengthen those areas. And areas where there may be some questions around budget alignment, that we get information in a timely fashion, and then align the budget with it. Where there may be some unclear alignment between the strategic plan and the initiative, then I think we should do the alignment. So I don't, I don't want it to be that, that because there may be some unreadiness about pieces of it, or some unreadiness about components of it, that that gets interpreted as an all-or-nothing thing. That's not where I am. So in that, in that context, I do think that in the waiver application itself, that the burden is on us as a district to make the case to the State Board, you know, the innovation, and I appreciate all that's been described around the themes and so forth. There's, there's still some questions I have in my reading of it, and I want you to keep in mind that the version I had two days ago is different from the version that I had this morning, because I just only had a chance to read the latest version this morning. But I do think we should still take some time to make sure that, that we're fully making the case for the good cause, and that we're making the case for the innovation. I'm not sure that, you know, referencing our stakeholders or the number of exclamation points that we use will necessarily make the case to the State Board in terms of innovation and good cause. And so what I've tried to recommend over the past couple of weeks, and for that matter, the past six months, is that we go and look at, it sounds like you all had some conversations with the State Board, we don't get the benefit of that, we trust you with that. But I think that to the extent that we can go and look at what waivers have been approved, and try to make sure that our application carries whatever strength that those applications had, and then applications that may have been denied, to make sure that our application doesn't carry any of those things that they may have had, that got the application denied, that we do that. And I just think that's just a good due diligence process and manner for us to approach it. The other piece of unreadiness that you heard from me this morning, and you may have heard from me over the last several days, is just where I am now. So, like I said, so we were originally going to meet on the twenty-second, and we had one set of data we were looking at. Then we're going to meet on the twenty-ninth, and we had another set of data we were looking at. And now we're meeting on the thirtieth, and we have a different set of data to look at. It's hard for me, trying to understand, trying to be a good and productive board member, to be able to absorb any changes that may come, and then be able to vote accordingly in a timely fashion when it, when it keeps changing. And so even, even today, I appreciate the clarity around the one ninety, because literally just two days ago, we were emailing about what's the budget cost around the one ninety. So that's just something that just changed today. So I just want you to appreciate for me that when stuff like that changes, it then messes my mind, because I come in with one set of understanding, and a series of questions, and being prepared to act accordingly with one set of assumptions and data in mind. And then when I get in a meeting and it changes, it's, that causes me to have unreadiness, because now I have to rethink my process. And that was the reason why I thought when we moved to the work session process and then the vote process was a very good thing, because it gave time for that. Also want you to know that I am very sensitive to the, to the timeline piece of it. But I don't like to be backed up in a corner and said that, okay, well, we just have to act, because the timing is, is up against the wall, when we've had plenty of time to work on this. And also, for me, there are, according to the waiver, about six thousand children, a whole bunch of families associated with it. And I do acknowledge, as I've acknowledged in the past before, I may be a little closer to it than others may be. And so, you know, I know what we went through when we had the year-round schools at Campus Southern P. B. Young, I know we had votes, I know what we had when we had Dream Keepers and had a theme, and then budgetary impact caused us to eliminate that. And so I'm just simply trying to bring to this governance leadership team, to this district, the benefit of that experience, so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we go down a path of something that is a great thing to do, and get a year down, or two years down, or three years down, and find that because of decisions we didn't make today, we aren't able to sustain it all the way through its success. So that's the context of my questions, context of my comments, and the context of my unreadiness. I just want to, again, try to bifurcate the strategy with the implementation.
So, two, two quick thoughts. One, I'm in agreement with Rodney that we don't pull the plug... One, uh, I, I'm in agreement with Rodney that, um, we, we don't pour the plug on the plan, uh, uh, because of the unreadiness. The, the other thing that's important to me is that we make a decision to do something. I, 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 I'm not comfortable with, say, just tabling it. Uh, I, I think we ought to have some clear next steps, whatever they are. Now, um, I, I need your, your help in this, Sam, because if we did not move forward with a, with an affirmative vote on the waiver, something needs to happen next and we need to, I'm understanding of it now, what next? So, so that we're all moving in that direction. Not, not go back and wait for the next thing to come our way. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yes.
And light of that, of course, we have to, we have to consider the timeline. So let's just keep that in, in, in mind, that we're gonna have to function within that timeline. So what I would like for the board to consider would be, would be to assign a board member. Or two. And I'll assign, um, several of my staff to, uh, take a look at where we are. And clearly outline any discussion items, look at any modifications that may be needed. Secure a timeline around those actions. And then, I guess at some point, bring it back to the body. And, and the reason that, uh, I'm settling on that approach is because then we have a collaborative between, uh, members of the board as, uh, policymaking officials. Along with members of my team as the individuals that, uh, I delegate authority to with certain expertise to do the day-to-day. So if they come together and we could do that, maybe we could see what we get.
And now personally, I, I, I like, I, I like the sound of that. And I don't want to, I don't want to, uh, turn this into a whole other discussion. But my, my hate, and that may be an overstatement of my feeling right now, is, is, is that the governance team approach we want to, uh, take in, in, in the rest of our work. And what I mean by that is we've talked about our philosophy as a governance team and mean, right? Uh, uh, self-committing versus committed one. And so that, 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 in my opinion, would be a philosophical move. I'm not saying it's a bad one, I think, but I think we ought to be real clear. So there may be times when we say, in, in an ad hoc manner, there would, there may be times when we feel the need to operate that way as it suits, uh, where we are in the work. Uh, but, but, but let's be clear, that is, that is as much a philosophical decision in terms of how we operate as a governance team, as well as a pragmatic decision related to this particular issue, in my opinion. I'm not, I'm not speaking against it, I'm standing, let's, let's be thoughtful.
When the waiver is brought to the Department of Education, is it just Sam that sits in front of the committee or is it Sam and board?
Sam can carry, uh, uh, whomever he desires, uh, board member, chair, member or administration to present before the D O E.
I wouldn't recommend we go.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just asking a question that, that's not, it's not a matter where, where they say superintendent alone, nobody else can come in. Yeah, he, he can take whatever he desires to, to support the presentation.
Has it been established that the board is not prepared to, uh, to move forward? Has that been established?
No, no, it hasn't. No. Okay, yes.
And if I could just ask a question, I don't think those are generally mutually exclusive to, you know, the waivers due Saturday. I know, Rodney, you've expressed concern about kind of backed into a date. But, you know, do we allow ourselves the widest berth of opportunity by submitting the waiver in the best form possible by Saturday? And then continuing to do the work that you have in mind in order to continue to improve upon it? Knowing that we then get on the docket for D O E, knowing that Dr. Sivigni has mentioned that there might be edits along the way that we have with D O E as we work with them. So, you know, do we want to shut down the opportunity just now because? My thinking is, I, I don't necessarily think we want to shut down that wide berth opportunity and that we do want to move forward with submitting the waiver for Saturday, knowing full well that we might want to improve upon it along the way with our interactions with D O E and does other things come to bear with other factors that we know, budget, schools, et cetera. But I'm not so sure we want to limit ourselves by saying no now.
So, so let me see if I can understand the, the, the February first deadline versus time period of D O E working along with you to improve upon the, the, uh, the application. So, so with, with, with that, after the first, is that still a part of the process that they continue to work with you on it? Or what, what they, what they have in their hands on the first of February is what they consider? Period, that's what I need to understand.
What Dr. Smith shared with us is that when we, uh, submit the waiver, it goes to her first, that they do that initial read and the clock starts ticking once we do that initial submission. So if it comes back and forth, because she is the one that actually submits it to the state.
Excuse me, doctor, are you still in all? Hello? Sorry to interrupt. Hello?
Hello?
I apologize, uh, flights are goofy. I'm getting ready to be boarded right now and therefore I will not have an opportunity to do the necessary introduction of the item that, uh, Ms. Doyle has brought for me. I hope I will have the opportunity, uh, in our February meeting to speak about the item that will be distributed. It is designed to be helpful in our planning and it was designed to be helpful in the presentation to the, uh, city council. Remember, I am with N S B A in Washington. Six months ago, we planned to visit Senator Warner and Senator King, which I'm doing, uh, next week. So I apologize, I can't, guys, that I won't be able to do the introduction to the item that's being, uh, given. But I would like the opportunity to explain it in February and I apologize with the interruption. Flying is very goofy right now and it's very hot down here.
Yeah, I, I feel sorry for you there, not condoning this as well. Listen, Warren.
I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear anybody feel sorry for me, but I apologize, I must, uh, I'm getting ready to board right now. And I thank you, um, Ms. Doyle for delivering that from my wife's home, my wife's, uh, mother's house. And, uh, again, I hope I will have the opportunity to speak to that item.
Warren, hold on just a second. Warren?
Anyway, yes.
Now, you know, we are here, we have three more hours, uh, in, in this meeting and, and, uh, and we'll be getting to the budget matters, uh, very, very shortly. So, um, are you saying you won't be able to sign back on with either layover or your arrival here?
Precisely, precisely, I will be in the air. What time do you expect you'll be getting to that?
I anticipate we should be at, I anticipate we should be at the budget matters within the next, uh, half an hour.
Uh, I will, what I will do is I will call in. I expect it's gonna take an hour or so, your flight, I'm leaving from Fort Lauderdale, it's pretty hot here.
Are you flying? Warren, are you flying straight through or do you have a layover?
Uh, I'm, I'm flying from here to Baltimore. Please don't speak of layovers because that may need to send me to Nebraska. Thank you very much, I'll call back in when we land there, perhaps you'll still be, uh, and I can speak.
I'm sure we will be, Warren, and our meeting with, our, our meeting with council.
It's very hot here.
Our meeting with council is on Tuesday, Warren, not Monday.
I, I didn't understand the question.
Our, our meeting with the city council is on Tuesday, not Monday.
It's been, it's been scheduled for Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, correct.
Oh. Well, I'm visiting the senators on Monday, let, let me double check and, and I will communicate with you, I will call you. I'll be home just in a few hours.
All right, come, come directly to the, uh, central administration bill.
Please forgive my generation, I can't hear you because it's too hot.
Can you hear me? Uh, he was confused, I believe, when I spoke with him earlier and he was telling me about this document. He thought we were meeting with council Monday and he was gonna be in DC on Monday. I said, no, we're meeting with council Tuesday, two to four. And he said, oh, so.
Must be really hot down there.
Yeah, anyway, so, so sorry, we interrupted your answer.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that in terms of the hundred and eighty day window, that when we submit it to the D O E, it goes to Dr. Smith. She's the one that would do that initial reading and then she would be the person that would submit it to the state for it to get onto their docket. So the time starts when it gets to Kathleen. So if she reads it or when she reads it and she finds, if she finds errors or has the recommendations or suggestions and it comes back, then the time is still good, we're still in that hundred and eighty day window. So the other thing I want to make sure is, on the transformation timeline, it talked about February first because we were trying to submit the open campus and, um, the transformation at the same time. But we have a later start date than open campus. So if we get our waiver in by the end of this coming week, we will still meet that window with adequate time.
End of next week.
The end of this, yes.
So next school week, seven days.
Next week. So if, we would still, I think, have time if the board decides that we want to have one or two or three individuals work with us to do that. We would still have time to do that, I think, and still meet our window.
Okay, so. I just got a technical question, whatever you get.
Go ahead, because I'm gonna make a recommendation, I'm gonna be asking for a motion in just a moment.
On the, uh, on the waiver itself, so my understanding is that, um, if approved, we will get reviewed annually. This annual certification process. In the, in the goals section, um, we know that our current baseline data is where it is. So we know that our twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen goals are what, what you said. Uh, in many cases, there is a significant jump. You know, there's one example where we go from a baseline data of nine and our, and we're going to seventy. So, so my, so my understanding is, is that if we say we go from nine to seventy, then that's what they're going to kind of hold us accountable to.
And we, and yeah.
So, so my, so my question is, if it's A and B, is one, uh, do we, as, because we are aspirational, we believe that all children shall learn and that, uh, we're not gonna let anything stand in the way of that. We know it can happen. I'm asking from a form standpoint, for this particular application, is it a good thing for us to say that we're gonna jump from a baseline score of math at nine at a grade level to a seventy in one year? And if so, can you just describe a little bit how the extra ten days and the innovative programs and other things are going to result in that, in that particular case, sixty-one point? We, because to me, those are the types of things that I would expect the state to ask us and that when we sign off on this thing, we're saying that we believe can happen and will happen.
You're representing like Catholic middle school math, seven?
No, 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 it's just, I didn't mention these schools or anything, I'm just looking at the chart.
Oh, because there is a nine there, that's what I thought.
There's plenty of them, no, it's quite a few of them. I mean, there's eleven to a seventy, a twenty-five to a seventy, and then after a significant one-year jump, then they kind of, you know, they steady out.
Uh, and the reason that we included the, the seventy percent is because the, part of the advice that we received from the state is that we did not want to have goals that were less than the state benchmarks.
But they'll still hold us accountable to meeting the seventy?
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
Yeah, and, and Kathleen spoke the record to that, actually, in that school improvement training. Is that we can set our goals, uh, and that we should.
Which is contradictory to, which is a contradiction, right? So on the one hand, she said to us, we can set the goals. But then she's telling us to set it at seventy.
Who told us to set it at seventy?
The recommendation. I mean, according to this, all the schools are gonna be accredited.
You say Kathleen recommended?
We, the advice we received, and I'll have to go back and look at my notes to see if that specific piece of advice came from Kathleen or someone, uh, in her office or in the other office that we've been working with, um, is that we did not want to have goals setting ourselves up, setting the schools up with goals that would be less than the state benchmarks. That was the advice that we received.
Yeah, it is.
But again, remember, this application goes to Dr. Smith. And if that is her recommendation that we lower those, because she's intimately familiar with all of our schools, um, then we can make those adjustments once it gets to it.
Okay. So, um, um, what I'm hearing is that there's still a window of time that we have to improve upon the application. Uh, I'm, I'm also hearing, uh, a recommendation for consideration of a board member or two to work along with, uh, uh, the persons, uh, that, uh, developing the application. So, so these are options for, uh, for our decision. So at this, at this point, I'm ready to, uh, to receive a motion as to direction of this.
Before we, before we review the motion, can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, if we submit the waiver as it is right now, um, I think that we should attach a cover letter to it. And, um, I'd like to see the cover letter.
We as in the board?
The board. Um, and in the cover love, cover letter, uh, I would like there to be clear explanation that this is, this waiver is for Kathleen to review and critique and bring back to the board and to the administration any concerns that they have because our ultimate goal is for approval. And if she has concerns about, um, our innovation, if she has concerns about specifically going from, uh, a SOL, uh, data point of nine to seventy, then I would like for her to have a clear understanding that, um, we, we, we respect and we look forward to her feedback because our ultimate goal is for approval. So I would.
My, my only concern with that is that, that can get, in my opinion, that can be too many cooks in the kitchen. Um, um, I, I think whoever the designated team is that's working on it.
That's fine, whoever those two members are.
Okay, because we're talking about full board receiving the feedback and that's too much.
We don't have to do it that way, but, but, but I think that if, if, if one hundred and eighty days, if it, if that day isn't the strict, this is your final answer, then I would like to, to have something to her clearly stating, we, we respectfully asked for your feedback because our ultimate goal is for approval because we do support the concepts and the ideas behind what the waiver is trying to establish. And then it is gonna be back to us as a board in the meantime to work through all of the details that Mr. Jordan really, uh, explained so well about aligning it to budget, aligning it to strategic plan, aligning it to professional development, et cetera. Um, but so that we don't miss that window of opportunity and so that we do keep the line of communications open with her, I think that would be the best approach to this matter. Because I do have, um, concerns about the waiver, but not the concept of, uh, transformation.
Okay, all right. Just, just one, I'm, I'm not, I don't know if we can do that, so, and I'm not, I don't, I don't know. So I'm just, all I go by is what I read and you all have to help me with that. So my understanding is that you go through these, go through the process. You've already had communication with the state, you've already gotten advice from the state. You've incorporated that advice into the application. The application then goes on a specific form that they provide, which we have. You submit it and then in whatever iterative process takes place falls within the guidelines. So I'm, I'm sure we can write as many cover letters as we like, I don't know whether or not. I would just be cautious that whatever the specific, uh, criteria is that we follow that, because I have seen in reading some of the applications that have been rejected, that if you don't submit that thing specific to the guidelines that they provided, they can easily reject it out of hand. So we just want to make sure we follow that. All, all I'm asking is, under the guidelines as they exist, there's like eight things that I'm looking at. And that we have an opportunity to make sure that the waiver request that we submit meets, uh, those criteria. And the, the areas that I've.
And the, the areas that I just want to reiterate, I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to do right, is that we all feel comfortable that we've made the case for the good cause. So if everybody feels good about that, then, then so be it. And that, um, the anticipated outcomes, including explanation as to why this believe the program will be a success, that everybody can check that off. You know we have a number of students affected in demographics. And then the, the, the other area that I tried to bring attention to before is number six says, evaluation procedures, including mechanisms for measuring goals and objectives, and analysis of data to determine how this program will support and expect the increase in efficiency in student academic achievement and any achievement gap. So in the evaluation procedures piece, I couldn't pull that out, but it may be in there. I just want to make sure that, that you all communicate that to us as well. And then the other piece of it is being able to demonstrate that the request that we are submitting, um, that we cannot do it on a regular after-lay-to-day start. So I think ultimately, that's what they want, to make sure that we make the case, that the initiative that we put forward, the goals that we say we're going to accomplish, that we clearly make the case
That it cannot be done.
That it cannot be done unless we have these, this start prior to layday. And I just want to make sure that that screams out, and that the evaluation piece is good. And that we, as we vote on this and move forward and you sign it, that you know that you can say with confidence that these criteria have been checked off. That's what I'm trying to make sure we're on.
And along the same line, I believe that we have an opportunity between now and the point that, uh, Dr. Sevigny pinpointed to bring some members from the board together, too, was my recommendation. And I'll determine the, you know, the members from our team to work with.
I said you would determine the members from the board.
No, I'm just kidding. To do just what Mr. Jordan described, you know, and we'll all function within the appropriate roles in terms of, of working collaboratively to do that. And in doing so, we will move pretty close to the time to submit. So then the thing that I think the board, I respectfully ask the board to consider, would be to make a motion that would incorporate what I just attempted to describe. So that once the team works together and they're, they make those changes, that through this motion, you authorize, uh, us to move forward with the agreed-upon changes with that team, and then it doesn't have to come back here.
And I, and I, and I'm, I'm in agreement with you there, but, you know, we, we have a work session on Wednesday. Uh, on Wednesday. In, in, in the, the best-case scenario, in my opinion, would be if, 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 if this thing could be, uh, improved upon, adjusted, whatever, by the fifth, all eyes are on it, when we're together, and, and, and that, I mean, best-case scenario. Now, uh, uh, ju- just so we all know, you know, that, uh, all systems go. Now, if, if, if that can happen, then we simply have to have, you know, an agreement on, uh, exactly what the contingencies are and, uh, and how we're agreeing to move forward. Okay, uh, so, motion to, to that end, please.
All right, I'll make the motion, just correct me if I'm incorrect. So I knew that the, um, designated members of the board along with designated members of the administration worked to improve the current waiver application for the themed transformation schools. In order for us to submit a waiver application that supports the approval of the alternative to the standard school year and school day, and that that work is done between now and the following week in order for us to submit the application in time to meet the hundred and eighty day prior to start of school.
Okay.
And that with that improvement and agreed upon, it is implied consent that the board will support that waiver application due to the improvement to the application.
Okay, so a second.
What do we mean by implied consent?
That the work done by the collaborative group will meet the, um, needs that, since Rodney spoke of in terms of meeting the criteria, that Dr. Houston would be comfortable signing it, as it meets the eight criteria. So that we feel that those who are at the table with the administration have the expertise to meet those needs. And that as a board, we would support the will of those collaborat- that, that collaborative effort.
I'll second it. Okay, any discussion? I'll give you a second, any discussion? All right, having had the motion, again, I think, uh, a little call of vote is over here. Good thing you left a lot to wear asses. Roll call, yes?
Dr. Houston?
Aye.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gaber?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
All right, uh, motion carries, orders ordered. I must say, in my opinion, that this is a good example of governance, in my opinion. Honesty, candor, good listening, adjustments, team effort, just my opinion. So, thank you all. Okay, thank you, Dr. Sevigny and your, your team for the work that you are putting into this.
Will you let us know through that soon?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's. I nominate Rodney and Noel.
I think he's right.
I, I promise you that I'll read it and submit all my comments in writing as I did before.
I, that's why, I, I mean, you guys are.
As for the meetings, I don't know if I can do all that, but I will review it against the guidelines and provide my comments and writing.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah. So with, with two of you who work along?
That's fine.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, um, item three point oh three, uh, do, do we need a quick break before we go on? There's gonna be a long segment here that we're gonna get into, so we need a brief, uh, I, I see one head shaking. So let's take, let's, let's take a short break, and then we'll dive into, uh, the, uh, budget discussion, okay?